It's about six o'clock and I would like to call this information study session of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Body? Dr. Kavanaugh? Ms. Hodgson? Mrs. Lawrence?
Here.
Mrs. Lilge?
Here.
Mr. Lopez? Mrs. Moore?
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez? Mrs. Willis?
Here.
Dr. Body? Or Miss President?
Thank you, good. We've got some stuff to do tonight. Any public comment? No. Okay, any other business additions to the agenda from board members? All right, we are going to get started with our arguably most exciting issue that has come before the board in the last few months, and that is the Sexton mascot rebranding. I will turn it over to Sexton Principal, Mr. Dan Bogan.
Good evening, everyone. Really excited to have the opportunity to present this in front of our board and as we come to the final part of this journey. I want to speak a little bit about, four years ago, before we had heard of the Native American Fund, we started working on removing items and articles of any type of paraphernalia that represented the Native American culture. Working with Mr. McGraw and Ms. Scott, my Assistant Principal, we went through the school several times and we're still working on removing certain items. But we have removed almost all of those items that are reflective of and disrespectful to the Native American culture. So with that happening four years ago, we were able to find out two years ago about the Fund, the Native American Heritage Fund, when we saw that Riddle and also Okamis benefited from the change. And, you know, there are some people who have the notion that we did it for the money when our district was ahead of this beforehand. We were planning on making the change prior to this. What the Funds did is allowed us to move faster and with the resources of the help that the Native American Heritage Fund allows us to, and make this change in a timely fashion. So I also brought two of my leaders who were part of our peer forward group, Chris Manuel and Joseph Kyle, and they have a statement to read as well before the PowerPoint.
Hello, my name is Christopher Manuel, and I will be speaking on the path of the student body and our need to change our mascot. The mascot is racially focused that stemmed during a bygone era which needs to be changed. We as a Sexton student body are excited to be a part of that change, to have a new era and a mascot for the future of Sexton High School that derived from a conscious effort to be less offensive and more inclusive. Changing the mascot that is offensive and outdated is an easy change at Sexton High School. We always want to stand up for what's right and just. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Joseph Kyle. I would like to echo what my classmate Christopher has said. I'm here to speak on behalf of the student body and our need to change our mascot. I feel like the change for our mascot is needed because knowing that it is racist towards Native American cu- the, I'm sorry, the Native American culture, knowing that it is disrespectful, let alone offending to other cultures, we would like to see the change within, I would like to see the change within my school. And knowing that JW Sexton heard the Native Americans and knowing how they felt about the mascot, we realize that it's time for a change. Thank you.
We want to move into our PowerPoint, which you've heard a little bit about, the first stage of the rebranding process happening even before the grant was offered to us. We were able to receive, as you see, eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the grant to help in the rebranding of our school, purchasing whether it be equipment that had Sexton, I should say, Native American items on it, and also we had a lot of rugs with arrows and faces and things that needed to be removed, as well as pictures and signs that had that old garb on it. And we were excited to receive this grant to help us move this process along faster. And our first step was really wanting to hear our student voice, and that was, we had a meeting in the summer before school started and invited our students in for food and just a conversation around the rebranding of Sexton High School. And that was really where it picked up steam. Our students were excited about the change. You know, most of them had been expecting it for some time, believe it or not. And then, of course, you know, we had some that didn't want the change, but understood why we were changing. You know, so hearing their voice, getting their feedback and finding out some of the names that they wanted was really important. We also had another student meeting first day of school in the assembly where we spoke about it, got more input from our students, the student body, and let them know that there would be a survey coming as well so that they could be a part of that vote and their voice would be heard about what they thought would be the change. We had a meeting with the community and alumni and students on September twenty-eighth where we opened it up for everyone to play a part, and we had a lot of great feedback from, and interesting discussions with some of our alumni as well who were here, and also some of the emails that were sent in to the board and myself and everyone else around this matter, and stating their opinions. And so we gave the opportunity for voices to be heard, first our students and our alumni and other stakeholders. So that was, that was important that we do that. After all the stakeholders were heard and the community's been heard, we sent out another survey to our students and to the community and our alumni for them to vote as well. And so this has gotten us to the process of the presentation and the finale. And our current students had an opportunity to vote one more time, and you did that to throw me off, Grandma? And so they had an opportunity to vote one more time, and the vote came out with five mascots, but four that were really commanding in numbers in the votes. And that is for the drum roll. Our results. All right, and so this is what our alumni, our students and stakeholders came up with. J-Dubs, number one, Scorpions, number two, Cardinals, three, and Big Dogs, four. As I've told my wife, who is a Sexton graduate, and she continues to act like I'm making this decision. It's like, wow, I now want to talk about it.
I know the feeling.
Yes, yes. So I've been told, don't come back with a raggedy name, so. I'm putting it on the board. So this is, this is important too, I know our community, our alumni, and it's a, it's a culture thing. When you hear J-Dubs, I remember it when I was in seventh grade, so it's the culture of Sexton, and I understood that's why they voted the way they did. I am not a Sexton graduate, but I've put enough years and time in here that I could carry a few diplomas for them. And so I appreciate their passion for their number one pick. And so now it's up to the decision of our board on where we go from here. Yes, Mrs. Willis?
Question, I appreciate the rankings. I'm curious if we could get the raw numbers behind them? I mean, you know, was it a five-vote split between our four? Was it a large?
It was fairly large, but I can get you the numbers. I know I sent it to John, I know he was having problems opening up the Google Doc. I'll get that too. But it was a pretty large number for the J-Dubs, but Scorpions received a nice amount of votes as well, where there was separation within the Cardinals and the Big Dogs.
And we, and we don't know, which I respect because votes should be confidential, but we don't know, was it all current students that voted for J-Dub?
Yes.
And we do know that?
This is all current?
That's all current.
Oh, what we're looking at is current?
Yeah, that's current, raw, right off the press last week, so.
Missy?
To the, to the student representatives, can you talk a little bit about how you voted and why? Or, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Ah, it's okay.
I just want to hear more about what is your feeling about, about the whole process? And if you want to share why you would pick, which one you would pick?
So me personally, I would, excuse me, me personally, I would pick J-Dub. Ever since I've been here at Sexton, I've been here since seventh grade, all I heard was J-Dub, you know, J-Dub, J-Dub, everything. Before I was even here at Sexton and I was watching the football games, it was just every, every talk between, you know, friends or my family, it was all J-Dubs. Everyone is just known as just, or the school is known as J-Dubs because, you know, it's a very powerful school.
I would like to piggyback off of what he said. Me growing up, my uncle graduated from here, all four of my siblings graduated from here. So me growing up, I've heard a lot about Sexton, and I would rarely hear them say just Sexton. Most of the time I'd hear them saying J-Dub. So when I saw that it was an option to pick that for our name, that was the first option. I really, I looked at the other ones, but I knew which one I wanted to pick.
I'm gonna make a preamble and then I'm gonna make a motion. My preamble is, no matter what the mascot is, the school will always be JW Sexton. It will always be JW Sexton. And we weren't, the mascot was never JW, it was a Big Red, and then it was the S Block. So that J-Dub nation, and I will let y'all have that, as an Everett Viking myself, will not go away. We are not.
Correct me.
Okay. We are not changing the name of the school, and so we're not going to take away the ability to yell out J-Dub, and especially when you're in your intra-district rivalry. Because I think about like, Everett didn't yell out Vikings. No, I'm sorry, we didn't yell out Everett, but y'all got to be J-Dub because that, like, your name was bigger than just, I was like, do we yell out Vikings? Yeah, we yell out Vikings. All that to say, Madam President, I would make the recommendation that the Board of Education accept the change of the mascot name to Scorpions.
It's been moved by Mrs. Willis, supported by Dr. Kavanaugh. I will open our discussion. I voted for Cardinals as a Sexton grad, but I appreciate the alliteration, of course, with Sexton Scorpions. In the meantime, while we're still using the S two, that could, of course, kind of mean Sexton Scorpions. I, when we started the rebranding process, I was at home talking to my mother-in-law, and I mentioned to her that one of the contenders was J-Dubs, and she said, what are, what are you saying? What words are you saying? She is not from here, she's lived in Lansing for three years, so she did not know what I was talking about. And I said, well, the name of the school is JW Sexton, it's after a guy. So that's, that's where J-Dubs came from. But if you're not from here, you don't understand that necessarily, and it doesn't make any sense. My other concern with the J-Dub mascot is, what are we going to put on the new shirts that I'll be ordering immediately? I don't know. Are we going to put J, J Sexton's face? Are we going to put a giant J? What are we going to put? I don't, I don't know. So I think with an animal, frankly, it's a lot easier to focus that branding, to come up with a mascot and a logo that makes sense. So although I voted for Cardinals, I think Scorpions is a pretty sweet new mascot, and I'm happy, I'm happy that we're at the end of this road, and I'm happy that that is one of the contenders because I really like it.
Can I chime in a little bit? Absolutely. I do feel your passion in J-Dubs because I am a graduate of Sexton. And it's the culture, right? J-Dubs, when I came from Everett.
Vikings?
Yeah, no. I was like, my friends were like, yeah, you're going to be a J-Dub, you're coming to Sexton. You're coming to Sexton. So I do appreciate you all here sharing with us why it's important to you. But then it also makes sense, what will the, what will the logo look like, right? Scorpions, scorpion, you're JW Sexton scorpion, you know, I can see that, but I can also see us in the crowd saying J-Dubs, you know? So I support you all in your passion, but I see how, I see and understand what our Madam Presi- what our Madam President is speaking of, when she talks about when other people are looking at our school. You know, what does J-Dubs mean, you know? Who is J-Dub? Who is the guy, you know, who is he? So.
Thank you for sharing. Dr. Rodriguez, and then Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. President, I would prefer to go back to the students. I would prefer to go back to the students and then select between Scorpions and Cardinals. If they made their decisions, the faculty, the student, the community, and not me, the evidence was not involved in the whole process, then I do prefer the reset, the whole thing back, and I'd be still involved Cardinal or Scorpions. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, and then Dr. Body?
I was going to say that Cardinals are all over the place. You have the professional Cardinals, you have Cardinals on the college campuses, and not, Scorpion is kind of a unique name, okay? It's different. And, and I don't disagree with Dr. Rodriguez either, but in terms of just the name, it's brand new, nobody else has it. So that I, I like that. And, but, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens. I think that it's been a long process. Thank you for your support, thank you for doing the work that you did. And, well, thank you, Madam President.
Dr. Body?
Good evening. I've lived actually more than half of my life in the Lansing area, but I grew up in Metro Detroit, and so in some ways I'm still an outsider. My high school was the Highlanders. When I was listening to the top four, you know, in my brain, I was like, well, what is a J-Dub? Or what would that look like? If you actually have a mascot in the gym at the basketball game, what would he or she be wearing? What would, what would a J-Dub be doing? And I'm not against the name. In fact, if, if the students were able to come up with something cool, like what does a J-Dub look like, an actual mascot, like a thing? I'd be more than willing to support it if that's really what the students want, because at the end of the day, it's not up to me. I'm, I'm happy to go with what is the, the will of the people, but I would want to learn more about what does a J-Dub actually look like? And I think that's why perhaps, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but maybe that's why they're leaning towards scorpion, because it's a thing. You can dress up, you can dress up as a scorpion, you can put it on a shirt, you know, but it's, at least to me, it's ambiguous, what would a J-Dub look like? And so if the students who supported J-Dub have a really clear understanding about what that would look like, and they can explain that, then I'd be happy to, to support it, or, you know? So maybe I could give the mic back to you.
So a J-Dub to me is, you know, a strong individual, very resilient, fierce, you know? Students that are dedicated and motivated to what they're doing, as it, it could be football, you know, basketball, any sport, but students that are actually dedicated and that love what, and love that, love what they do. Excuse me.
Oh, I would just agree with what Chris said. It's really just off of the faith and the love that the students have for whichever sport they play, because it's really going off of how, how they would basically see the J-Dub.
Dr. Body, I think saying that a J-Dub is ambiguous is generous. I understand completely what the students are saying because that's, that's what a Sexton student is, right? I'm envisioning ten years from now, what is going to be on the football helmets? What is going to be on the jerseys? In my opinion, we need to have a mascot that, that hopefully we don't have to change it ever again. It's going to stand the test of time, it's going to be recognizable, it's going to be brandable, and we're going to be able to imprint that logo on rugs and wrestling mats and uniforms. In, in my opinion, again, the, the, the name of, the full name of the school is JW Sexton's, and, and I think calling the mascot the JW Sexton, J-Dubs, we've got, we've got room there to be the JW Sexton Scorpions, Cardinals, something else is, because we're lucky, we get, we get to call ourselves two things, J-Dubs and whatever we decide tonight. Miss Lilge?
Oh, did you?
And I think Ms. Moore has spoke to this before. I think Ms. Moore and Mrs. Lawrence had spoke to this before, will always be J-Dubs. That will never change. It's on my bulletin board, and it'll always be there. I've been screaming it at graduations, as you guys, you know, we are J-Dubs. So that will not change, no matter what the mascot is. So if we could leave here tonight with something within our timeline that we're working on to roll out to our staff, to our students, our community, before the close of this school year, which we have preparations for, and this is why we present to you today. And if you say it's Scorpions, which is number two, which I, we've had so many surveys to our students already, Dr. Rodriguez, so I would not want to put another one out. This would be like four or five, so I'm happy to take this back to our students. I know that making them understand that we are J-Dub. You know, this is who we are, this is our culture, this is where we're built from academically and athletically, and some of you wear that standard right now. So if we could have a decision before we leave, I would like that.
It's our intention. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, thank you very much. That's the illumination. Give me more, more points of view in how to vote, you know, just vote for, I think, I believe in you and your administration and the staff and students and the community of Sexton, and I ensure that you can present to them that what we vote tonight is the best thing for Sexton, and I will communicate that to my daughter who also is a Sexton
Mr. Lopez, and then Miss Lilge.
Yeah, you know, I, I guess it would be very interesting to see what students came up with in terms of logo, J-Dubs. Reminds me of Lansing lug nuts. What? What the heck is that? You know, and they came up with a very cool mascot, you know, but it takes imagination, and what would that be? And that's, I'm not saying, but it'd be something that they would like to work on, see what it looks like. It's fun, it'd be a fun exercise. But, you know, if you're, if you're okay with the Scorpions, and which I, I think it's cool too, it's different, it's new, it's fresh, you know, in terms of logos, mascots around, then be careful with a scorpion.
I think, to speak to what Mr. Lopez had said, he said, I don't know of any Scorpions that have a mascot. These schools are not in Michigan that I can think of, but I'm sure there's some out there, but someone would have to search far and wide to find them.
Miss Lilge?
If you'll indulge me in a story, when I was, I am not a Sexton graduate, and I'm kind of jealous of myself. But when I was a freshman in college, I had a friend who had a pet scorpion in his dorm room. It was big, it was like terrifying. And he, one day he bought a small hamster to feed to the scorpion, and then he put it in the tank with the scorpion, and then he felt bad about it, and quickly rescued it, and then he gave the hamster to me, which became my pet.
What college did you go to?
The University of Michigan.
Explains a lot.
Makes sense.
So my point is that I think scorpions are terrifying and strong, and, you know, they'll stop at nothing, and they have all these amazing systems in place to get what they need and to protect themselves and to, you know, if we establish that you get to keep J-Dubs, no matter what your, your, I guess my question is, does scorpion or Cardinal, like, which one seems like it embodies J-Dub? Because whatever we pick is going to be J-Dub.
Absolutely. Well, you said it powerful, strong, fierce, I think we represent that. And we're resilient, we do not stop, we continue in any venture that we set forth. So I think the scorpion does fit that model, and as you said, Miss Lilge, J-Dubs is, that's who we are.
So it seems like the question is, J-Dub what? It's not J-Dubs or not J-Dubs. J-Dubs, scorpion, Cardinal?
No, Sexton Cardinal, I mean Sexton Scorpions.
J-Dub.
J-Dubs is just, it's a nickname. That's all it is, it's a nickname, it's, it's battle pride all over the place.
And it stays?
Yes.
Does that, like, I'm... Does that, like, I'm trying to put myself in your position, because again, I don't have a reference for what you are going through. And when I first heard you say not J-Dubs, I was like, you know, because I could see a creative process in creating what that could be, and I thinking about like Big Love, and how we didn't know what that was, and then they made something that's Big Love for lug nuts, and like, we could go through that process, but I just, I hate to like vote one way or the other, because I feel like this isn't my, I don't have, I'm not the right person to make this decision.
Am I the right person to make this decision?
You have more of a stake in it, you're more stakeful.
And this is a board decision? The students have had five surveys?
Four, no.
These results are the information that the students are giving us.
Yes, yes. And J-Dubs have been consistently the number one with students and alumni, so.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Ms. Lilge mentioned that she doesn't have personal experience with this sort of thing, but I do. So, I went to a high school called Oneida High School, and we also had an unfortunate mascot, that we also went through a process of a renaming process, very similar to this one. But we also had our version of J-Dubs, and that was Big O. That was what everyone said at graduation, that's what everyone knew us as, that's what everybody talked about us as. So, I was a freshman when we did this whole voting process. And I remember feeling so disconnected from the voting process, because I was like, no matter what, everyone's still gonna say Big O. And so, I know that this point's been made several times, but as somebody who has lived it, you will always be J-Dubs, that's still what everybody's gonna call you. It's just about this other mascot that we get to have in addition to it. I know that was definitely my experience as a graduate of Oneida High School.
Thank you. That is one of the reasons I'm talking, not necessarily that you were back. If they made a decision today, tonight, it's going to lose, I will impose our decision to the students and to the faculty and to the people in Lansing. I don't want the perception in that way. I prefer that they decide by themselves, and we approve that you were coming with a recommendation to us, and now we are changing that. I don't think that that's fair. And that's all. I respect the students and the faculty, all the work they did, and I don't want to make the decision for them, and I know how much time and sentiments and feelings they put in that process. Thank you.
Madam President, to the point raised by my colleague, Dr. Rodriguez, this process of the final decision coming down to the board, has that, was that explained throughout the process, that as we laid out and rolled this out when we first started working with the Native American Heritage Fund, that this process will ultimately lie, the decision will ultimately lie with the board? Is that, can someone correct me that?
That's a good question, Mrs. Willis. I'll answer with the information that I know, and maybe Ben or John would like to add. But yes, that has always been explained to the public, to the students and to the public writ large. This timeline has been presented for several months. Back in the summertime, when we started having these discussions, the decision was always that it would ultimately come to the board for final approval, and that the mascot would be announced, the rebranding would be essentially finalized before winter break.
Yeah, well, good evening, everyone. It's really wonderful to see you. I know you both are students, which is great. As a superintendent, to be able to know students, it makes me very happy. That was always the intent. What I wanted to say about the process is, everybody got a voice, which is so powerful. Alumni, students, faculty, and you know, honestly, if you weren't even an alumni, you could probably cheat and put your name in on the Google spreadsheet. Everybody got a voice. And what I love about tonight is you're presenting the vote, you're presenting the voice. And the voice is, number one, J-Dubs, number two, Scorpions. And as we've heard over and over again, and again, my accent clearly belies the fact that I'm not from here, and I certainly did not go to Sexton, or Eastern or Everett, I love you all equally. But, you know, the idea that everybody got a voice, everybody got to say, and now you're presenting to the board, number one, number two, number three, number four, number one, it sounds, again, from the alumni, you'll always be J-Dubs, and now you go to the voice of the people, to number two, because that's just kind of how democracy works. And, you know, I think it's kind of great to be able to do it. I am the last person to say anything about arts, or alliteration, or whatever, but if you are happy with it, I am happy with it. And I think that that's what's so powerful about today, and having this kind of process. And, you know, John, who I think has become an expert in all things mascot related, you know, one of the things I'm really proud of from our staff, from this board, and from really the Sexton community, is how transparent we really have been. There have been places that they just kind of make the decision. Here, everybody did it, we did it for months on end, and now we're at a point where, you know, at least as a superintendent, I feel very comfortable that people have had their say, they've had their moment, and now the board will have a say. But John, you know, you've been so great about all of this, so I'm glad you could say something.
Can you guys hear, oh, there we go, okay, thank you. Yeah, so first of all, thank you, Board, and thank you to the staff here at Sexton and the students. This has been a great process with everybody having a voice. We wanted to make sure that it was a transparent process. So, we have had this information on the website, on a page, that's a Sexton rebranding page. And yes, the intention was always to come to the board, as the President has said, for you to vote. So, I'm really proud that we've taken all the steps that we've done to make sure that everybody did have a voice. And then, you know, as Mr. Bogan had said earlier, to make sure that it went back to the students for their final voice, after they got input from the community and heard their voice as well, that they were able to come up with things. And I agree with the J-Dubs, you know, always be a J-Dub. And as far as the mascot, the intent was to come up with the name today, and then to work on the mascot. And during that process, which we will do, is have community input as well, have students draw whatever that mascot is, possibly alumni as well, and then, you know, kind of fine-tune that, and have our graphic designer put the final touches on it, make it digital, and then get approval from the board for that as well. And then we want to do a grand finale at a pep rally here at Sexton, right before the winter break, to really hype up whatever that mascot name is, and then work on the merchandise and everything else that we will do next year, and include branding the building, uniforms, helmets, whatever we have to do, we will do that as well. And we've also been transparent that this is the mascot, not the logo. So, the logo behind you, the S with the two, we are going to remove the two. We got a lot of feedback as well, that people do not like the two, but they do like the S. So, we'll be keeping the colors, those will be incorporated into the next step as well with the mascot. So, it'll be the block S without the two for the mascot, so, and then whatever, or I'm sorry, for the logo, and then the mascot, whatever, you know, you approve tonight, we'll start working on that. So, just thank you, everybody, for all your input, the community was great. You know, we did hear every aspect you could imagine, we got emails that were, you know, every aspect of it. So, it was an interesting process, but I'm really proud that we made it a public, open process this whole way. So, I look forward to what you come up with.
Thanks, John. Any other comments from board members on this topic? Okay, then we're gonna vote, and I will call the rule on this, I'm a yes. Dr. Body? Dr. Kavanaugh? Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez? Dr. Rodriguez? And Mrs. Willis? Motion passes. Sexton Scorpions!
And again, thank you all. It's been, it's been terrific. As somebody who went to a university that had nothing, it was just the color, we always felt pretty bad, we were also not very good at sports. So, it's really nice to know that we now have something that is strong, resilient, deadly, and will hopefully win all sorts of wonderful things. So, thank you.
Thank you to you students in particular, I'm very proud of you guys for leading this.
They're going with me to see Lion King and Aprils.
Okay.
They'll be rewarded.
Scorpion King.
Thank you, thank you.
We're gonna shift gears a little bit this evening, and have a presentation from Mr. Sergio Peck and a team of people who he has brought with him this evening. Mr. Peck, when you're ready, take it away.
Good evening. It's an honor to be at the JW Sexton Scorpions Cafeteria. I'm a father of three children that are Everett, Eevee alumni, but just want to thank the Board and the Sexton community for what a wonderful way of demonstrating how a democratic process can work, and how wonderful it is to live in a community and work for an institution that provides this type of process, especially for our students and for the future of our kids. So, quite an honor. Today, we're here to talk about special populations. We want to introduce Ms. Eileen Prighora, a person that you have seen many times now, from Special Ed Director. Angela Berry, she's Assistant Director of Preschools. Dr. Namie, she's the new Special Populations Director. And Claudia Cabrera Rodriguez, who happens to be our Spanish Community liaison. So, we have a few topics to touch. In every topic, you know about, some you know more about than others, and because we have several topics, we're gonna have a few minutes taking turns to talk about each topic. So, we're gonna start with an update on special education, Ms. Prighora.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening. And yes, I will go ahead and just, I know that I have been keeping you informed of the special education numbers and where we're at with referrals, and I just kind of wanted to give you an update on where we are at in comparison to last year at this time. So, last year, we had a total number of 517 initial evaluation requests for special education. As you can see, that was 314 for kindergarten through 12th grade, and 230 for our early childhood special education program. Right now, at the end of the first quarter, you can see, we have received 185 referrals for special education evaluation in grades K through 12, and 54 for our early childhood special education program. So, right now, we are at almost half of what we were for all of last year. So, we're getting quite an influx of referrals. We went to then look at where the referrals are coming from. The schools that we have the highest number of referrals from are our K through eight schools, Gardner, Dwight Rich, Patengill, Wexford. Then they kind of go down from there, the referrals, you'll see a lot of coordination with the grade levels. When we go to the next slide, our grade levels, the highest number of referrals are coming from first grade, third grade, second grade, and then kindergarten. So, that K through, those K through three grades are where we're seeing the most referrals in all areas. These include autism, cognitive impairments, specific learning disabilities. So, I have not quite broken it down yet to where those eligibilities are being finalized, because we are still in the process of evaluating so many students. That because of the influx of special education students, it has created some vacancies. As you can see, we have some resource room vacancies. As our numbers go up, I frequently will contact, put in a justification statement to request additional staff. So, we have some resource room teacher vacancies, many of those are being filled by substitute teachers right now. Then we have some speech and language vacancies, social work vacancies, we have some of our program teacher vacancies, we have numerous paraprofessional vacancies, and for our ECSE program, it's growing at such a rate that we currently have 37 students that we predict will qualify for services, and we have 28 spots remaining. We have, all of our ASD classrooms are at or above capacity right now. So, I just want to give kudos to our special education staff, they are working very, very hard, the assistant directors, the administrators, the staff, all working really hard to meet the students' needs. And, I'm sorry, yes.
Can you tell them what ESCSE and ASD?
I'm sorry, yes. ECSE is Early Childhood Special Education, and ASD is Autism Spectrum Disorder. So, we have made a lot of really positive movement in the special education department. A parent advisory committee has been established, which meets monthly, and we've had some really nice participation with that. We are collaborating with MSU for a study with the Mitten Project, which is a virtual reality program to teach adult transition skills. We have created a Lansing School District Special Education Policy and Procedure Manual, which has done wonders in creating consistency across the district. We've conducted several trainings in collaboration with MDE and the Ingham ISD, which is in coordination with our action plan based on the results of the study from last year. We've conducted an IEP boot camp and an educational benefit review. Those have been extremely informative and very beneficial, and have received a lot of positive feedback from staff. We are developing a process with Dwight Rich and Everett for a discipline toolkit in order to look at how to effectively work with behaviors. And as far as our compliance, we have gone down from over 200 corrective actions to approximately 30 that we are in the process of closing. And then we had a teacher over at Beekman, Sandy Henry, who was awarded $1,000 by Gruba Orthodontics. So, I thought that, I think we may have a video clip of that. And then Lori Abbott Smith has been appointed as the new Beekman Principal. And there's just a short clip that shows Sandy Henry receiving her award. If, I'm not sure if it, maybe.
It was a 30-second clip, but I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to, I'm glad that you described what the award was and who awarded it, but I don't think.
We may not have that, that clip may not have gone into the PowerPoint the way we would like it to.
So, just one more thing too, when we were, when we were discussing the numbers and the staffing, we've been working together very close with the Human Resource Department, with our unions, with our universities, to come up with forms, to continue to find employees and staff for this.
Okay. Isn't that funny?
Okay. To find ways to continue to grow our special education staff. The process of helping out and making sure that we find applicants, that the interviews are conducted quickly, and provide offers, all that process we're working to make sure that we provide the services that we need to provide. The next slide, the next program are the English learners, but we need the slides All right. Dr. Namie?
Good evening, Board. I'm so happy to be here and to present
I'm so happy to be here and to present to you all just sort of a big picture look at our English learner program. I think one of the great things that we've been doing over this, these past couple of weeks is really delving into our numbers and understanding who our population is and how we can best support them. I think one of the things that we, we were looking at is the distinction between bilingual students, so students in our district who speak a second language but not necessarily receiving services as English language learners. That number is 1853. So, we have families throughout the whole district that have a second language that is being spoken in the home. Our English language learners make up about 1550, which I think is a significant number. And I think it also sort of speaks to the populations that exist within our district.
Can I just clarify, that 1853, the graphic leads me to believe that it includes that 1550, is that correct?
Yes, yeah. This particular graph shows the countries of birth of that 1550. So, the English learners that are receiving services, the greatest number of students that we're seeing are from Afghanistan, with the second being students from the Congo. So, I think one of the other distinctions that's important to note is that there are 642 EL, so those that are receiving services that were born within the United States. So, that, we took that number out and in order to just sort of separate who our population is made up of. Just makes sense.
That's, that's because they don't speak English at home?
That's right.
At all? Probably, or they, they speak so little English at home that they do not have essentially proficiency in English.
So, when a language survey was done upon enrollment, the family identified that a second language is being spoken in the home as the primary language. And that's how we came, that's how that number is.
You said there were 642? Who were born in this country but identify as EL students?
Yes.
Okay.
Who are still receiving services. No, no, it, please interrupt because these, these numbers are confusing when we're looking at how we make out those distinctions. The primary languages that we're seeing amongst our populations are Spanish. So, there are 50 separate languages that are being spoken amongst our populations. And the most, the largest number that has emerged this year are our Spanish speakers. So, I think what was really interesting for us is to further break that down. So, these are English learners, so those receiving services. And we broke it down by school and by grade. And it shouldn't be a shock to anyone that Gardner absorbs the majority of that population. There are, they are the largest population in the district of where services are being sought. And we have a fabulous principal and wonderful staff that work so hard to support our students. Our newly arrived by country, and I think this graphic looks at, so this, these would be students who arrived at the end of spring semester. So, the largest population that we received that arrived probably mid-June, so they wouldn't have been counted in that spring school year, but would have arrived like maybe June 15th or something like that, well into fall semester are our students from Afghanistan. With the second being Cuba, which I don't think many people were aware of. Newly arrived by school, again, shouldn't be really surprising to people, but the majority of our newer arrivals have landed in Gardner. And they have such wonderful wraparound services and supports that I'm so confident when our students are able to be placed there because it's such a wonderful staff and very engaged in the newcomer process. I think also, one of the other things that I wanted to note about where students are landing, the second highest population is going into Everett. So, of our high schools, our newcomers are landing straight into Everett. What we also did was to break down our WEATA scores and where students who are receiving services, where they are on the spectrum. So, the WEATA, for those that may not know, is our English proficiency exam that all of students have to take upon arrival into the district. And there are four components of it. So, for those that are in the early stages of their language development, they would be at the entering stage, then emerging, developing, expanding, and bridging. And the bulk of our students throughout, all students that are receiving support services as English learners are in the developing stage. The bulk of those numbers are also at Everett and Gardner. And finally, just a quick overview of the services that our EL population receives. We do facilitate the newcomer intake, so as families arrive into the district, they come to the welcome center, they are, the WEATA is administered along with the survey in order to determine where placement and supports are needed. We work with community agencies to aid both the student and the family. So, that would be examples such as a Refugee Development Center or St. Vincent's. We support transition and acclimation into the US education system, so really helping families and their caregivers understand what a US education will look like. Determining proper placement of EL students, so we work with our PACE Office to determine where the openings are, especially within our LAP schools that are able to provide English language services. We also assist with EL-related assessments. We provide individual instruction to EL students, so we're overseeing and helping teachers really get the services and the supports they need in order to create a classroom that is supportive of the various types of English language learners in their classroom. We're also really working to develop our family and community outreach and engagement. We had such a successful summer camp this past year, it's called our BEST Camp, and we had over 150 students that participated, with the majority of them being those new arrivals. So, if they arrived after that school year ended, they were enrolled within that summer camp over the summer. I think this is just a graphic to really show where the numbers were and, I don't wanna say damage, but, yes.
Let me say a couple of words about this graph. This is, if you can look at the first one and the second one, and the one, the second one, you will notice, especially after the 2016 election, the former administration, when the, the structure of resettling people in this country got disseminated. So, this was an issue at the federal level, which there were not many people coming into the country and into Lansing. And because of all the funding they took away from the federal level, it ended up impacting our school district in a way because for three or four years that we didn't have kids coming in, then we have, we had staff in the school that now they have to provide another service instead of ESL. So, now, four years later, last year, we welcomed the Afghan population and the whole system at the federal level and at the local level became stressed because there was not a support there used to be. So, for three or four years, we had all these wonderful services, which we still did a little bit in the high schools, but now we had to build them back again. And that's the story of how these special populations work.
Do you anticipate that that number will continue to go back up? Do we have the capacity and the staffing for it?
Yes, we always will have the staffing because we have created such a strong foundation in some of our schools that we have a lot of experts and professionals that can support and train other people. But if you see at the next slide, this past year, 6,000 new arrivals came to the state of Michigan. And if you look at Lansing, you can see some numbers that we had last year, 322 Afghans. And if you saw the list, half of those arrivals were kids. And many, many, I would say 95%, stayed in Lansing. The Cubans and the Venezuelans and new populations are coming in. I'm sure, Dr. Baty, you might be seeing new, new cultures coming through your office. And so, we did start resettling a lot of people. The issue that we have gone now is that refugee services was used to, they resettled what is called RMP, which is receive and place. So, they receive the families and they place them. The immigration system in the United States in the last couple of years has started to change. So, there are other ways of people coming into the country, through refugee services, but with different status. We, as a school district, we don't even look at what the status is, but according to the status that they come in with, they qualify for certain services. So, we might have some people that are qualifying for these services and some people that are not. So, we have to pay attention on who they are so we can support them. For next, for this year, that started on October 1st, we are supposed to expect 330 new arrivals to the city of Lansing. And we're going to have a lot of people from Cuba and Ukraine and Venezuela. Now, the most Ukrainians that come to Lansing, to Michigan, 80% go to the southeast of the state. And many of them are through private sponsorships, so they're not even going through agencies. So, we might have people that are coming that they don't know that we have a welcome center, that we do this and that and that, so we have to make sure that we work very close with the schools, that every kid that comes in, we take good care of. That about wraps it up about the future and of English learners. Ms. Angie Berry is here to talk about early childhood education.
Yes, sir.
Here on the refugees, you said some might be able to give them some services, others may not. What kind of services might others not get?
Okay, so, if you come with the status like RMP, that receive and place, when they come in and they are provided with many services, some of them, like people from Cuba and other countries are coming in with, well, with parolee status. So, these are people that are coming in, but they have, then two years, they have to apply to make sure that they have a children. And once they have that, then they can apply for the green card. So, those are the type of differences that we are experiencing.
Well, I thought you were talking about services that the school district?
No, no, no.
Okay, all right, all right.
The outside, the community wraparound services might be different because of the status that they have.
Okay, no, that I understand. I was, when you said some of this may or may not receive some services, I was thinking school services, our services to them.
Mr. Peck, can we take other questions from Board members on that section? If people have questions?
I think, thank you, thank you very much. I think Mr. Lopez asked a very, very question. There need to be study a little more because we are talking about families that are coming and asking for, asking here, but there are many other families in Lansing. Then we take them to our schools and we didn't talk about the services. Then I don't know tonight, but in the future, I would like to know all the students because we are talking about refugees, that the government is giving them the services. There are many other students that go every day to our schools and we didn't talk about them tonight. Might want to talk about them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia Rodriguez. A lot of people that are coming to the federal support services, refugees, not coming that way anymore. And then you mentioned another group of people that, yes, can provide same services. Now, we have a Spanish, we have a Spanish liaison that is working with a lot of families seeking support and services. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Hello. So, just commenting on the varying statuses that we're seeing. So, what Mr. Peck is kind of describing is some of these community agencies that historically used to provide help to refugees from, for example, Cuba, Venezuela, Mexico. Because of these shifts over time of different populations coming through, right now, they're not necessarily providing services to those people. And so, people are, especially from Cuba, I'm from Cuba myself, they are getting here and they really don't know where to go. They're really relying on the school system for guidance and for resources. And so, it's been a challenge, but I think as we move forward and we see that there are gonna be more of these students coming through, we can definitely prepare to provide more of those services and try to supplement until the city can kind of catch up with what's going on.
Good answer. Okay, Ms. Angie?
Hello. So, first of all, I'm very grateful to be working in a district where we have so much support for early childhood, support from the board, our superintendent, our community. So, we, as you all know, started universal preschool. And so, that means that now anyone that lives in Lansing or has a Lansing address or is a Lansing School District resident and is four years old on or before December 1st can attend preschool here in Lansing at no cost. And we have currently 32 classrooms in 14 schools, and so you can see our schools are listed there. And we are also the fourth largest public school district GSRP program in the state. So, there's, of course, Detroit Public Schools has the most GSRP classrooms in Michigan, and then Grand Rapids, Dearborn, and then us. So, it's something we can be, really be proud of.
Mr. Superintendent, do you wanna say anything about that data?
As, as the team knows, I'm just really proud. I mean, we're coming to get you, Dearborn. We'd like to be number three soon. But, you know, just the idea of universal pre-K is just so powerful, to be able to say to a community, if you're four years old, we got you, we'll be paying dividends for generations, I think, in this, in this city. And thanks to the great work of Angie Berry and Sergio and the whole team, really within 16 months. I mean, we, we decided this, you know, second week of July 2021, and they've been able to expand the program. You know, you'll see what they've been able to do, there's some more data. But to go now to be at 32 classrooms is really quite significant, and we're continuing to grow it. And certainly, anybody listening at home, you got a four-year-old, bring them to GSRP.
Yes, thank you. So, we are now, actually, we're growing every day, so that says 494, but as of today, we're at 495 students enrolled. And not only are we building the capacity and growing our program in numbers, but what I'm so proud of, of our program is that we're a good, very good quality preschool program. We have a one-to-eight teacher-student ratio and a maximum of 16 students in each classroom. And so, that means with 32 classrooms at this time, we have capacity for 512 students. So, we're close to that number and we anticipate being there very soon. And this kind of shows the history of our preschool enrollment. So, as you can see, in 1718, we could go back even further, but we went back to 1718 and we had 387 students enrolled then. So, we've grown by almost 110 students to, to now. And you can see, we have different sections there. There's the GSRP students, so they're funded by the GSRP grant. Head Start students, so we have Head Start Blend students in our program, in our classroom. And then ECRP means they are students with IEPs that have been intentionally placed in inclusive classrooms. So, in 1718, we did not have the, those GSRP and inclusive classrooms. We started that in 1819, we call it our Pathway to K program. And then it's just been nice to see how we've been growing since then. Of course, there was the dip when we were virtual that one year, but we were able to build the numbers back up. And going back to our quality preschool program, all of our lead teachers must have a teaching certificate with a ZA or ZS endorsement, which is an early childhood endorsement. And that is really huge because most preschool programs do not require that teaching certificate. But because our lead teachers are on the same contract as our K through 12 teachers, we do provide that here and require that here, which I think is really powerful. And then all of our associate teachers, so each classroom has a lead teacher and an associate teacher. We consider them a teaching team. They must at least have a child development associate credential and it's renewed every three years. But most of our, a lot of our associate teachers also have bachelor's degrees and even master's degrees in early childhood. And we've been working very, very hard on staffing. So we are proud to say that 30 of our 32 lead teacher positions are currently filled. And the two that are not filled, we have some very well-credentialed long-term subs there. So we have a former GSRP lead teacher from Holt. We're trying to get her to actually apply for the position because she's, she's a little hesitant. She has four kids at home, she's a very busy mom, but she's a great teacher. So we want her to apply. And then we have a former LSD associate teacher who's also long-term subbing in one of those positions. And again, she is wonderful.
She is my mother's best friend.
Oh, yes. Yes. And then 31 of our 32 associate teacher positions are filled. And we are currently have someone that's in the onboarding process for that 32nd position. She actually has a teaching certificate with a child endorse, or early childhood endorsement. However, she's working on her master's degree. So she doesn't want to be a lead teacher at this time. She wants to be an associate teacher. So our teachers are just very well-qualified.
Thank you. If we have 494 students and we have 32 classrooms, some of the teachers might be working in the morning, another working in the afternoon?
They're, they're full-day programs. Is that what you mean? I'm sorry.
Yeah, but we have eight students in every classroom.
We have 16 students in every classroom.
You have one.
One adult.
For every age.
That's correct. So we have two teachers in each classroom, an associate teacher and a lead teacher.
Sixty-four teachers.
No.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
You can call them teachers.
Yes, yeah, we call them teachers.
Yes.
And, and the second question that is for me is how these teachers are, the budget for them? How we pay the teachers? What budget?
We, yes. The, the preschool system in the Lansing School District is funded through grants from the state. That's called the GSRP grant. It's funded through Head Start. It's, and then the rest of the funding, it comes through the general fund of the Lansing School District. Your work.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Could a GSRP student choice into the Lansing School District?
GSRP student?
Have we ever had someone try to do, like, they live in the East Lansing School District, but they want to go to GSRP at Post Oak?
Oh, so if they, we prioritize Lansing School District families, like people that live in the Lansing School District. However, if they qualify for GSRP, if they're income-eligible and we have space available, then they're, and they're in the Ingham County Consortium, then they may be offered a spot, but we prioritize LSD families.
But we've gotten rid of that income eligibility, correct?
That's correct, but we're still funded by the GSRP grant.
Okay, so there are still underlying qualifications that you would have to qualify for if you were in a district that did not have universal pre-K?
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Do we get per pupil funding from the state for GSRP students?
Yes.
Has it always been that way?
Yes, but now we get the same, Governor Whitmer made it so that we now get the same funding for GSRP students per pupil as we do for K through 12 students.
So 90, 9100, okay. What, what did we previously get?
It was quite a bit less, but I can't, I can't remember it.
I don't, I don't need to.
Yeah, it used to be all the way from 2,500 in the morning, from $5,000. Then it went up to 6,200. And this is the first year that we are basically getting the same amount.
Okay. Does every district get that?
Yes.
And, and if, if, if this answer is asking you to hypothesize, that's not what I'm trying to ask you to do. But why doesn't every district have universal pre-K if they get the same dollars for it?
Well, right.
You can do it, Angie.
I mean, I think that was a very smart move that was made by our district because it's amazing to see what happened. First of all, what surprised me is that most of the people that applied actually ended up meeting the income requirements because they have to be 250% FPL, federal poverty level and below. And people think that they might not qualify and they do not apply. However, most people did. So of our 495 students that are currently enrolled, 89 are over income, which is a lot less than what I thought it was going to be. We also get 15, so the GSRP grant says 15, you have to prioritize the income eligibility families first. But then after that, you can have 15% of the families be over income. And due to this, we are realizing we're going to have every one of our preschool students all pass, if we get to 512, which I'm sure we will, they will all be funded by the GSRP grant and it will not.
Yeah, I mean, so at the end of the day, having universal pre-K is always the right thing because it's what's right for kids. What's nice about the way that this is funding is, at worst, we were probably going to have to eat the cost of maybe 50 kids. But as Angie said, and as I kind of had always thought, is so many families are sometimes just reluctant to do it because they think they might not qualify. By us just saying universal, everybody started applying and more often than not, they did. We are, again, given that 15% extra cushion. And, you know, it might turn out that we'll have to pay for two kids, three kids. But by just saying universal, it tells the community to come on in. You know, I hope, not that any other superintendent's listening, but like, I would urge you all to become universal pre-K because at, at worst, it's going to cost you, you know, 100,000 bucks. But at the end, those kids tend to stay more and do it. So, yeah.
You mentioned a figure that is used to qualify in terms of family income. Do you know, can you tell me in terms of dollars, what that dollar amount is?
It depends on how many people are in your household. So there is a chart, like, I encourage people, like, to do federal poverty level calculator. And, but it is, as an example, I think a family of four, if it's like 63,000 or something, family income, I could be, I could be really off. But that's about, about, right, okay. Thank you.
And, and the thing about the 15%, that's for the whole county. So the 15%, so we are basically guaranteed to have every kid covered through that grant.
Angie, you said we have capacity for 512 students. I think that was the number you said. What if we had more applicants than that?
I mean, we would, I guess I would have to ask our school district, would we, you know, where would we go from there?
I mean, you know, look, we have the capacity. We would just have to go find the staff. You know, we, we picked 512 because it was about the number we thought it was going to be. I think that's where we're going to be. But honestly, if anybody listening has 17 kids they want to send, we'll find the space. You know, this is a district that has the physical rooms that are ready. We would just then go out to, to hire more people. So, yeah, that number 512 is just really a budgeted and class number. We can go and continue with that.
Are GSRP and Head Start students in the same class?
Yes. So if you go into a classroom, you wouldn't know who is.
They're just funded differently. Okay. I think this is my last question. Why no GSRP on Fridays?
Because, yeah, that's a great question. So our grant does, and we are funded by the GSRP grant and we follow those qualifications. They require time that our teachers have for planning, for professional development, for parent-teacher conferences. And that time on Fridays is very well-used. Yep, so that really gives them time to look at their classroom data and intentionally plan and scaffold learning for each individual child and prepare materials, all kinds of things.
As you know, my son is a GSRP student this year.
I do know that.
And we love the program so, so, so much. It is just working out so well for us. He has so much fun. I encourage so many parents of young kids to put their kids, I'm like, it's free. You aren't allowed to even bring their, they have to eat the food that they get fed. You can't even pack their lunch. Like, it is so wonderful, it's so easy. So I'm trying to get us to that 512.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting there. We're going to make it.
I'm so happy we did this. And as Sergio knows, I tried to get my kid in last year, even though he was not old enough. But I'm, I, we just love GSRP so much. It's such a great asset to our district.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Angie. Thank you for the presentation now. And I, sometimes when I speak too much about the preschool programs in this community, I get in trouble by the other competing agencies. But there is no preschool classroom in this whole mid-Michigan area with the quality of the staff, the location, and everything else that's inside there. Our reviews, we have to have a, we have to have a certain number to be able to keep the funding. And we're way above that number. So it's another beauty.
Ms. Lujing has a question.
I'm sorry. I apologize, I had to run out. My kids were here and their ride was here. So if someone already asked this question, I apologize. So if the kids are not ready to move on to kindergarten at the end of that year, can they repeat? Is there some times to kids to two years? How does that work?
Who wants to answer that? You want to answer that?
That's a great question. So they would have to meet the age eligibility requirement. So not four-year, sorry. They can't be, oh my gosh, it gets so confusing. You can't be five by September 1st. You can't be five after September 1st. But now we do have the Young Fives classroom that meets the, that age range. And so some of those children, if you've already had a preschool experience, are encouraged to go to the Young Fives classrooms.
And is that considered GSRP?
No. Yep, that would be kindergarten.
Does every building have Young Fives? Every building that's K through?
There's only, Kendon and Guyer Park have a Young Fives classroom. So there's two Young Fives classrooms right now.
And I just want to thank Angie and the team. This district had never had Young Fives before, but yet everybody else in the area did. Clearly, it was the right thing to do. And we were able to create it in a year. We have two classrooms. We're certainly, depending on the need, will add more as we see fit. But to your point, Missy, you know, we understand that kids develop at different times. And just when you're born doesn't necessarily mean where you are in the developmental process. So by having GSRP, by having Young Fives, and then by having a robust kindergarten program, we feel that we're really doing a great service to the community.
I'm so happy you asked that because I have another child. Who's going to come to GSRP next year. She's about to turn three next week. And next fall, she will turn four before December 1st. But she's going to be super young for her age if she goes to kindergarten the next year. So I'm so happy to learn about this other option.
Very well. You're learning a lot about ages. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just want to say one more thing. We just had a really wonderful PD at Happen Dance with all of our preschool teachers. And we learned, we learned how to teach math through movement and dance. So thank you, Missy, for helping to organize that. That was wonderful.
Thank you. So that's the beauty of the school district and how many different programs and scenes we have. We jump from three, four-year-olds to career technical education. And that one, I think Superintendent and I are going to do it together because this is another one of his babies. So if you look at enrollment of career technical education, there's a place in Mason that provides services. That's called the Wilson Talent Center. And they, we have 33 students there, okay? In different areas. There's another place that's called Eaton Risa and through LCC West. And they also provide some programming and we have 28 students. And then you go and look at the Lansing School District. And with, you know, the other thing, you know, the superintendent heard the community and then the superintendent talked to us and we had to do some work here. And it got done. So look at the number. We have 160 kids in the Hill Center in our own programs. And some of those programs are very special that are going to be very useful for the future of our community. So if you look at all three programs together, there's 221 students of the Lansing School District participating in these different programs. That's a beautiful thing. But the next slide is even more beautiful. Okay, coming soon, the Lansing City High School. Mr. Superintendent, you want to do that one?
Sure.
Come on.
You know, look, having children be able to graduate high school with skills to be active members of the society, to be able to have a job is one of the most important things. Common parlance is college and career readiness. But so many of the districts around the, around the country focus on that college piece. And I'm a big fan of college, clearly. I went to a lot of universities and owe a lot of money. But the idea that we could also have a robust career program is something that's so powerful. And I know that Lansing really believes in it. And so we were able to win a federal grant that part of it is going to help fund a CTE high school. But I want to be clear here, this isn't like the old CTE programs. CTE in Michigan tends to be only a two-year program. You tend to go to a place like the Wilson Talent Center or Eaton Risa and you do something in the morning and then you go back to your school in the afternoon or vice versa. And you only do it in 11th and 12th grade. But where Lansing is building something special is by saying, why can't we incorporate your academics within the career and technical education pipeline? So instead of being shipped out somewhere and be, instead of it only being 11th and 12th grade, this will be a four-year program where in ninth grade, they start learning about, and it could be the, you know, construction science or computer science or health science. And then in their math class, they'll be doing math based on the trade school work that they're doing. They'll be doing math based on computer science, math based on health science. And imagine how much more real, right? How often do you hear a student go, why do I have to do this? What's the point? Well, the point is so that you could become a firefighter or you could be an electrician. And when you make math or English or science or social studies tangible and real, the, the positive externalities are incredible. Kids are much more engaged, they want to do better, they work better. And so we're really thrilled that starting in the fall of 2023, so, you know, next fall, we'll be starting with a ninth grade. And then there'll be ninth, 10th, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th. And then after four years, there'll be a full, a full four-year high school. And as you can see in the slide, or, I don't know, I guess I'm on camera. So in the slide, take my word for it, we have construction science, computer science, and health science. That's part of the fire science as well. And then because we also should not, not use the facilities we have, we are thinking about creating a culinary and hospitality pathway as well because the Hill Center actually has a lot of these things. Plus, we've heard from our students and from this community that having a culinary program would be really powerful. And what I love about the things that we've chosen, all of them can lead to huge careers, you know, health science, nurse, doctor, computer science. I mean, you know, they could make literally billions of dollars. And then with construction science, you know, electricians, plumbers, you name it. These are really good jobs that, that are part of academics, that they can get their high school diploma, but then also really get these wonderful skills and jobs. And we're really thankful for our partners, the Building Trades. You know, unions have been incredible. We're already building a lot of this stuff with the community. And I just can't wait to open up the school in. And I just can't wait to open up the school in, in the fall. So, and I'll search this.
Well done. Thank you.
Will this school have its own school code, and the kids will be graduating from the Lansing CTE Hill scorpions?
Yeah, they'll have their own EEM. We have yet to decide a name other than the CTE High School. You know, maybe let the kids decide like, like here. But yeah, it would be a separate EEM because they'll have their math, their history, their science, et cetera there.
Is there gonna be a selection process for students who want to be in this high school? How would that look like?
Absolutely. And I'll certainly defer to Sergio and of course Nicole Millsap, who can't be here today, the director. Starting very soon, and in fact, probably already, we're going into the seventh grades, the eighth grades, and telling them all about it. If you remember, one of the things that we really pushed, and Sergio and the team did a great job, we didn't have that many kids in CTE, and it wasn't because the kids didn't want it. They just didn't necessarily know about it, and we had some pretty huge barriers to entry. So what we'll be doing over the next couple of months is having conversations in the seventh grades, in the eighth grades, and asking students who would like to be a part of it. What's really wonderful about the federal grant is we'll have what we call are these focus teachers. And that's really a misnomer. They're gonna be kind of the leads of each of these tracks. So we'll hire the person who's gonna run the construction science program, and they'll go to Gardner, they'll go to Pattonville, they'll go to, you know, wherever, and say Wexford, and say, hey, do you want to do these things? And they'll sign up just as if they're signing up for Eastern or Everett or Saxon.
Okay, so, so there's gonna be a, what I quote, average, grade point average to be able to go to this?
No, no. This is open to all children. You know, if you're in eighth grade and you want to go there for ninth grade, we want your interest. And what we of course find, especially with CTE, is your previous work, be it A student or D student, when you get to a place that you're happy, that you're hands-on learning, that you chose to be in, students do incredibly well. In fact, if you look at CTE high school graduation rates across the country, they graduate more kids than regular high schools because of that. So this will really just be about interest. And then if we have an oversubscription, then we'll have a lottery.
And, and obviously, it won't be a place that some teachers want to send a child because they're not being good students in their classroom.
No, and I'm so glad you brought that up, Guillermo. Sadly, in this country, CTE became code for, we don't want you at the regular school. And it became a dumping ground. And sadly, that was one of the death knells for Hill as well, is that we were choosing it as a, you can't do it here, so go over there. This is the exact opposite. This is an eighth-grade child who says, I want to be here. I want to be part of it. And we know that this will be really strong because of that. This is never gonna be a dumping ground, and it's also gonna be an academic place. Their math teachers, their English, their science, their social studies will all be there learning. So I'm really glad you brought that up because I want everybody hearing this and to know that we believe in this because it's what kids want, not because we're gonna force anybody there. Super.
Mr. Superintendent, what is our, our break-even enrollment to cover the operating cost of a new building?
Sure. So, you know, the nice thing about this is the sunk costs are already there. We own Hill, and thanks now to the bond that was passed on Tuesday. We will have an entire second floor that's open. So the break-even for this, you know, the average teacher salary is 114,000, 112,000. You know, if we had, you know, four, you know, you all only really need about 10 kids per class to break even for any of this. It would be a different story if we had to build a new building, or if we had to do whatever. And the grant is gonna help with some of the equipment that we need. So as long as we're able to really get 10 kids per tranche, we should be good. Our hope and what we're planning on is 75 kids, or 25 kids per pathway. So over four years, it'll be 100, 100, 100, 100. So if we, if we add the culinary, it'll be four tracks, 25 per grade, and it'll end up being a school of 400, and it will absolutely cover the expenses. If not actually, not that we ever think of making a profit, but it'll actually, you know, cover.
This is a little bit of a tangent, but you just mentioned the average teacher salary, which I think, if you could clarify.
Sure. It includes benefits, right? Because we gotta pay all the bills, you know? No, the teachers do not make 114, but we do pay a lot of benefits here, which is great. So, you know, we do have to pay the cost for that. So that's where that number comes from.
Thank you so much. Our next topic, which is a journey to Eversole and the Equine Center, real quick. There we go. So the Evers- Eversole Environmental Education Center offers, as many of you know, three different kinds of programming, onsite, and outreach and virtual. Over 1,000 students have already been part of it, and the track is, the goal is to hit 3,000. If you see at the numbers, it tells you right there how many kids have participated so far in each of the programs. And it also explains to you the Equine Center, that how many kids have participated in that program. One of the beautiful scenes that the district is doing is the upgrade and site improvements of Eversole. So as you can see, the outdoor pavilion and the theater projects were completed in June. We're in the, in the process of building two staff case cabins. And the Eversole Foundation is preparing to donate 800, no, not 800, 80 acres parcel of land to be incorporated into the existing Eversole Center property. This donation would expand the center's acreage from 158 to 238 acres. And the monetary value of this donation exceeds $750,000. Not only is that whole center being upgraded and improvement, new programming is coming. And starting in the first, in the week of December 9th and 11th, we are gonna offer our first weekend credit recovery, recovery offerings for mathematics, for Algebra I. Many of our children, unfortunately, sometimes don't do so well in that. And the ability of having such a great facility to have kids for two days to work under math and also be able to be exposed to other elements that are not like what they see in Lansing every day, it's an incredible opportunity to help our kids succeed and our schools increase their graduation rate. We're also working, amputating a semester-long stay. The construction of the new cabins and the dorm renovations are going on. And we're still in the planning phase, and we hope to possible openings to be for 2023 or 2024. So a lot of good work is being done at the Eversole Center, and more good stuff is coming.
Sergio, do you mind if I add something? Well, I, I, it's weird, right? One thing I want to make the board to kind of really hit home. The single greatest indication of a child graduating high school is typically if their parents graduated high school. But within their academic track record, there's an almost one-for-one correlation between passing ninth grade algebra or not. If you pass grade ninth, if you pass ninth grade algebra on time, you almost always graduate, like 99%. And what we have found is that, you know, we really want everybody to graduate. We believe in that, is that this district has over 450 algebra failure rates. So if you look at that second piece, it's the most frequently failed course. And we know that it is the, the, really the demarker of are you gonna graduate on time or not? And so what's so amazing about this, and, you know, I've been talking about this to many of my friends in the education community. And if we can pull this off, this will be a game changer, not just for Lansing, but really for this country. To be able to create these intense weekends where you have great math instruction, with great math teachers, where you're spending eight, 10, 15 hours going over the stuff. Because what you can imagine is, you took ninth grade math, you failed it, you got a, whatever it is, three-point spot. You failed it by three points. You failed it by four points. You did the class. You sat there. But for whatever reason, it didn't resonate with you. Now we can create a curriculum that's hands-on, that's, that's embedded in the woods, that kids can have no other things to distract them. If we can get, you know, 25 kids a weekend, going up there, getting credit, and then cycling through, we really can hit home where I think we can be with that 85% graduation rate. And if this works, we would then move on to ninth grade algebra, and then ninth grade English, and then ninth grade history. And we're gonna use this as a real, a real pattern. And I, we're all really looking forward to December 9th. I want to thank Ben Botwinski quite a lot. I want to thank Sergio and the team. I want to thank one of our consultants, Karen, Karen Goldmark, who's really been helpful with this. If we pull this off, and I hope we will, I'm not gonna promise anything, this will be a game changer, not just for Lansing, but for the country.
I never knew about the correlation between ninth grade algebra and graduating from high school. But I remember that I almost failed ninth grade algebra. And the three years of math that I had to take in high school were three out of the four of the hardest classes that I ever took in my life. And I have just, I've always been terrible at math. And even when you're talking about ninth grade algebra, I can feel my, truly, I can feel my anxiety level raising because I'm 40 years old, but I'm still like, oh my God, what if I have to go back and take a math class? And if we can give those kids resources that they need, I mean, my parents tried everything with me and nothing worked. And hopefully this will, because I, I did not know about that correlation. It does not surprise me because if you think you're stupid, then you, you act like I'm, I'm stupid. I can't do this because I'm stupid. And why am I even coming to school? So I think this is a really cool thing.
Mr. Superintendent, I appreciate you sharing this with us. I don't know where that question comes from. We see here that there is an interest of, what did I see, 11 kids in the weekend program. Could you talk to us about our efforts to, again, this isn't about money, but dollar sense makes sense. So what, what are the numbers we're looking to have on those week? Well, you said 25, but what happens if brass tax comes and four kids want to come?
Sure. I mean, I think, you know, that's a great question. You know, we do want to try this. We also believe that even if we ran it at a little bit of a deficit, the word will get out that kids really like it. Because what we have found with Eversole is that when kids go up there, they really enjoy it. But there's a hesitancy to go up there. What I will say, and he's left, but I'll thank Mr. Bogan, is that the numbers that you see initially were not a, a hard push on the students. We are now going to the principals because they now understand how important this is. So we feel, I mean, Dan said like, he could get us there tomorrow. So like, we, we feel we'll do it. I'd like to start a little small, but the 25, you know, again, this is the same thing with Hill. Because we have, we had the facility, it's actually not that expensive. But yeah, it's, you know, if we can bring 20, 25 a weekend, that'll, that'll pay for itself.
Sure. And, and it's more just the, the economics of scale, more than the finances of it. I'm, final question is, are we sending a Lansing teacher there for the weekend? Or are we utilizing, where are they? What city is that?
Wayland. Now, there are people. And one of the cool things, and I hope to invite all of you out there when it's finally built, is we're building cabins for the teachers so that they go out. They still get a salary, but they'll also get food, and they'll get a house. And, you know, it's, it's pretty great.
Just a question. You, you mentioned the start of the weekend credit recovery in December. What about the residential program?
Yeah, sure. So, so if you see on the second, the second tranche here, we really wanted to try to get a, a true boarding school, a true institute starting. What we have found is that it's really hard to get kids to Eversole full-time. Again, Ben did some great analysis, and he found that you've got students who have a lot of commitments at home. You have students that have a lot of commitments in school, like sports teams or things like that. And then you also have kids that don't necessarily see that they can spend all six months up there. So what we're gonna be trying to do is still working with students to see if they really want to do this or not. But what's so wonderful, and this is the, this is why it was gonna work regardless, is that the institute would be Monday through Friday, and then the weekends would be from, you know, Friday to Sunday. So the new cabins and the new dorms, we'd be able to cycle through. So, you know, I, I think what we'll probably end up doing is having the credit recovery run throughout the year with the hope of really starting up the institute next year. But we'll see. We're still, we're still asking students if they want to do it. We're still looking for kids. It's not a done deal. But right now, the, the number of students that have committed to the six-month, the second semester program is really too small to, you know, Rachel's point, to run it economically. You can't run a full program with three kids. It just doesn't make any sense. But these weekends will, will really be able to, to run pretty efficiently.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We also have the Equine Center, which has nine full-size horses and four miniature horses, or ponies. And if you see the picture right there, we have two of them, Rufus and Lance, that they're going to be going to a foster home. They have completed their, their task with our children. And their life at the Bigman Center will be moved on to a foster home. And they're gonna have great care, and they're gonna be fine, okay? But they're going away. Bye-bye Rufus and Lance. All right. So once again, now we're gonna flip to adult education because we go from horses to adult education. That's the Lansing School District. Okay. It's all yours, Ms. Dr. Navy.
I'm so proud of the work that Adult Education is doing this year because we are, we are just busting at the seams with the classes that, that are being offered. Currently, we have ESL classes, GED, and high school completion running out of the Welcome Center. With the ESL, there are six levels that are absorbed within two classrooms. There is ABE and GED preparation, along with high school completion that is being run. Our GED class is also supporting the GED testing lab as well. So students are able to complete the coursework with support, and then able to test at the center as well. For our ESL classes, we are at 126 students and growing. So it is a large, large class. And you have to remember that there is two morning classes and two afternoon classes that are absorbing 126 students. With ABE and GED, there are 31 students that are enrolled. 16 are doing high school completion credits. And also, there are 25 that are working towards completing a GED at the Ingham County Correctional Center as well. We also will be offering a pathway option for our adult education students. And that will include CNA, Community Interpretation. So people who will be able to do translation and interpretation for our families, along with ParaPro certificates as well. The Ingham County Correctional Center will begin offering skills trade with the help of virtual reality equipment starting in spring semester as well. And we just recently hired a Pathway to Option Specialist, and she will begin December 1st. And she is set to support both our ESL and GED students in finding professional opportunities beyond completion of either ESL or GED. And then hopefully in spring semester, with the approval of state funding, we'll be able to offer daycare for both our ESL and GED classes as well.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Your CNA training, is, is this something we developed in the school district? Or is it something that, what is the training like?
We collaborate with, I forgot the name of the entity. We can get you the name of it, but there is an entity.
DMR? DRM?
DRM, DRM, that's right.
And I'm asking that because I belong to the Commission on Services to the Aging. And, you know, there's a lot of, you know, CNA-type people that, folks. And what we're trying to do is to make that a... And what we're trying to do is to make that a a certificate program so that they can get more paid. Generally, these positions don't pay that much. And so the state is, is looking at a particular training. They haven't thought of yet. But I'm wondering if that would be something that, that you might want to have a conversation with the state, the VHS, in terms of training for CNA folks.
Yes.
I know they have other names. We talk to different people.
Yes.
But generally, they're, they're home health providers or assistance helpers.
There is such an opportunity to grow this particular part of our program. And that's why I'm so excited for our Pathway to Option Specialist to begin because I think that would be the nature of her work, is to grow these relationships and develop them a little bit further, these opportunities a little bit further. So yes, we're happy to work in collaboration with as many entities to support these options for our students who have an interest.
I'll give you a name, and then your folks can call and see if there's an opportunity to collaborate.
Excellent, yes.
I have a question, and the president left, so I get to ask it. Really quick. The GED program at ICYC, I thought that students enrolled at ICYC.
It's not ICYC.
It's not. Oh. ICCC. Okay, thank you. First of all, that was one of my clear questions. But I thought the students at ICC, which is the, we're talking about the school on homes. We're talking about the detention center. Oh, adults. Okay. Do we have? That's gonna be a totally different population than the youth. Because this is adult accredited programming, okay.
Yes.
Oh, I'll save it for when we get to ICYC. How about that? Sure, Ms. Moore.
Eighteen and above for adult education. Oh, my goodness. We have a seventy-four-year-old woman that comes to our ESL class. So it's, it's a one, if you, if you ever get the opportunity to come in and just observe a classroom, it's so wonderful to see the age range, the various amount of people that are from all over the world that are there. It's such a wonderful community, and all the teachers have really worked to sort of create community within their own classrooms. So it's been wonderful to see the, the coffee talk that they have because there's a little coffee station. And these older adults are learning to make friends, you know, in English. And they're working so hard to try and develop their skills. So it's such a wonderful program, and I'm, I'm so proud of the work that's being done there. Onto our Native American program. And I was really surprised. I'm new into this role, and so when I first began, we really took inventory of how many students qualify for this Native American program. And within the district, there are three hundred and fifty students that identify in some capacity, self-identified of being Native Americans. So that is, they are, they have identified within their enrollment system that they, and so you could, you know, when you have the option to choose your race, you also have the option to choose two or more races. It would be students who have self-identified in both of those categories. So there are three hundred and fifty that identify as such. But there are a hundred and nineteen that the federal government recognizes as part of the, the federal grant that we receive to provide support services for students who have 506 plans. And those, that is the paperwork that Indigenous people need to complete in order to receive support services. So of those three hundred and fifty, there's a hundred and nineteen that, that work to re, that have intensive, that qualify for intensive services with our Native American coordinator. Some of the work that she does, Ramona Henry is our coordinator. She does quite a bit of community advocacy, so working within the Native American population within the greater Lansing area, which also includes elders that come to the community center to do programming and supports for students. She is also in the schools and is eligible to do school visits for students who are struggling. There is also a summer camp that takes place that is focused on language and culture and crafts and cooking and academics. And I'm so proud this year, we're able to offer the Nishanabe Wayan language classes. And I am so sorry that I said that incorrectly. But this will be the first year that that's being offered. And so enrollment for court, for the language classes will begin next year, or next week, with hopes of starting in December. There is also after-school tutoring that takes place for students who come to the Welcome Center and receive tutoring support from Ramona and the elders and volunteers from the community.
Ms. Uopas?
Yes, just, what is the 506 program?
So the, the federal government requires people who have Native American bloodline to complete this work. And so you have to prove to the government that you have lineage. And that allows for you to qualify for services and supports. And so it's, it's kind of a, a very intensive application process. And so Ramona works with families who are interested in applying and can show bloodline. And as a result of that, you're able to receive sort of the free education opportunities, a lot of the federal opportunities that are given under the Native American grant writing.
It's an application to everything that they have in file?
Yes. Yes. And, and the monies we receive from those grants are based on how many of those applications are registered with, with us.
Thank you, Dr. Naime. I feel like I'm at home going like this, changing channels in the weekend. Okay. The ICYC, Ingham County Youth Center. This is a, our Lansing School District staff provides services for the educational component of the youth center. The goal is to, for us to provide services in the four basic content areas, math, English Language Arts, science, and social studies. The Ingham County Youth Center is for, from the Ingham County, and therefore, there can be children from twelve different cities in there. This year so far, we serve, the youth center serves over one hundred and twenty-five students. Basically, the, the way the place looks like, it's a twenty-four-hour, twenty-four-bed, secure detention center. The house residents are there because there was some incident with the law or some probation, or they're, they're awaiting some corp hearings. The students in there are giving services through the county under the Rational Behavior Training, RBT. This is a program that we have had for many years. We have two teachers. We have a, a transition specialist and an instructional assistant. The transition happens when the students are released. If they're able to come back to the community, then they come back to our schools, and the transition specialist works with the schools to ensure there is a smooth transition. I'm not sure how many people know about this program, but this is something that also the Lansing School District does to the best of our capacity. And I know that one, one comment or one question has to come from that side of the table.
Yes, thank you. I have two questions, actually. So I, I'm a juvenile justice researcher, and I do research consulting for Ingham County's Thirty First Circuit Court, including for ICYC. I see two challenges that I'm wondering if you can speak to, how the school district addresses. The first one is that fifty-eight percent of youth are at ICYC for less than a week, and the mean stay is fifteen days. So how do you approach the challenge of students who are going to be there for only a matter of days?
To answer that question, the numbers are very interesting, that some of them are only there for a few days, and some, because what has happened, as you know, and you have explained this to me too, that the states are getting longer and longer because there's becoming more and more difficult to find places to place the students. So the, one of the first things that we do, we get the information from the school where they come from, to see where they are, if they have an IEP, and what kind of other needs this student needs. If this is a ninth grader, if this is an eighth grader, if it's a tenth grader. And from there, the teacher has to find a way to try to provide the educational need within that grade level. So it's not, it's almost like the old schoolhouse, you know? Like, one teacher for one subject, but has to go up and down the needs of the kids. And the second question?
Yeah, second question is, is related. So about sixty percent of youth that come through the youth center have been readmitted. So that means they've been to the youth center more than once. Sometimes the length of time that's elapsed between their first stay and their second stay is really long, right? So it might be an offense that was committed many years ago, and now they've committed a new offense, and they're back at ICYC. But sometimes they are at ICYC maybe for pre-trial, and then they're gone for a week, and then they're back the next week. How do you address the challenge of youth who are admitted multiple times, especially when it's within a short duration?
Some of the youth that go through that process, that come back, the staff has already become acquainted with them. And unfortunately, they have, they come back, but they know where they're at and where they have to catch up the child with. The, the biggest challenge that we have is, how do we ensure that when these kids are released and go back to the high schools, that we make a good connection with the teachers to make sure that whatever they learn at the youth center is credited in the course in the school? That way, they don't lose. What I've also learned by doing, by seeing this, supervising this place for so many years, that a lot of kids do a lot of learning when they're there for two or three or four weeks. We run out of books to buy. Every year, we have to buy new books because the kids read. And they spend a lot of time on their own, and they find reading to be kind of a relaxing, a smooth way of spending the time there. So their academic skills many times goes way up when they're there. You're welcome. And I hope we can find a way for them to not come back to the youth center. Yes.
My question's about the, how are those students count in terms of our school's overall attainment? You know, GPA? Does it count as a district student when the student is here?
If the student is a Lansing School District student and goes to the youth center, when that child comes back to the Lansing School District, continues to be our student like any other student. So their GPA is the same as, you know?
I'm talking about the other schools, our students that are not Lansing schools.
Yes.
But are in the ICYC program.
Yes.
Or they are students?
They are not our students.
They are students?
They are not our students.
They're not our students?
No.
So any negative? Not learning, because not, it's not the Lansing schools?
Yeah. Because there's the Ingham Academy, and there's the ICYC, there are two different ways. Also, the way that the state looks at a residential facility is as exempt when it comes to things like graduation rates, whereas Ingham Academy, which is non-residential-based, would be our own. But that's a program that we're no longer a, a part of. So also, as Dr. Kavanaugh mentioned, many of these students, when they come to ICYC, it's very brief. Five days, two days. It's processing, and then it's out. So it really doesn't impact the graduation rate, GPA, whatever. And then the funding is a little bit different. And so it's a, it's a different kind of mechanism rather than the, you know, the count and the days and the things like that. So I'm happy to go into it more in detail. But I appreciate the question because you, you would seem unfair if like ten kids from another district coming in. But with this program, it's not.
Thank you. We have one more program that is called the, I'm not sure how many of you know. I, I think many of you know this. The WIOA, WIOYA, or WIOYA. As, you know, you know how I speak, but it's the youth program, and it's the WIOA. All right? This is a federal program to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act that takes place at Michigan Works. And these are for our kids that are from the ages between fourteen to twenty-four years of age. And we serve over a hundred and fifty kids. And basically, we try to provide services for kids that have been disengaged from the traditional school. And we can keep these kids in the program until they're twenty-four years of age. We help them with the GED. We also help them obtain a job. We pay fourteen dollars an hour. And also, we have something that's called Jobs Michigan Graduate Program, which happens to be part here in Sexton, which is a class of kids where they learn about career development, employment skills, leadership opportunities, and a lot of many. Another special program that we offer to special pops, which I remember Ms. Moore is also part of it, is Junior Board. And for that, we're going to let Ms. Claudia take you via.
Good evening. I'm just gonna speak very briefly about Junior Board. As you may or may not know, Junior Board is a district-wide youth leadership group. And it has been in the Lansing School District for over twenty years. This student group basically takes in the student voice and communicates that to the school board. So it's definitely a great opportunity for students to see kind of the inner workings of a big organization like the Lansing School District. Here we have our organizational chart. I am a district advisor alongside Carrie Christian, led by Sergio Keck and Robin Moore. And this year, we have focused on mental health as our kind of initiative for the year. So Jennifer West has been guiding us in terms of what we will be sharing with our schools. So for Junior Board, right now, we have eight schools that are participating. And as I just mentioned, the Mental Health Monday campaign will be taking place this year. This was voted on last year by our students, and we've decided to continue with that as it's kind of a broad area that we can continue to develop and grow in. So how we're going to celebrate Mental Health Mondays and have that be a part of this initiative is our slogan. It's okay to not be okay. This is to raise awareness and reduce the stigma surrounding mental health. In addition to this, students and staff are encouraged to wear green to be recognized and participating in Mental Health Mondays. Schools are encouraged to plan activities and announcements. And we have shared the green bracelets that will help in kicking off this initiative. And with this, there will be a memo sent out to our schools regarding mental health, the mental health initiative, and will include a lot of resources for our staff to be empowered to support our students in different situations.
Ms. Moore, would you like to say something about this program? Because I know it's got to your heart.
No, I just want to say that it is okay. I, I'm super glad to go to you. About a month ago, we had a meeting in the work. But I'm not. So I just want to say I appreciate the time you've been giving.
We, we appreciate you too, and the kids too, more than, that's what we need. So we have one last program. And please trust us, we had a few more programs, but we knew this was going to be more than that for one day. this was going to be more than that for one day. We really appreciate it. So one of the big elements in future of a school district is being able to provide internships to the future of this profession. And as you can see, we have interns and seniors from, right now, from three different universities. Of course, Michigan State University gets the bigger logo, because that's where they're coming from, and it's our neighbor, and, I'm Spartan. Okay. So, so here we go. This year, we have 25 interns from Michigan State, one from Arizona State, and one, and two from Ferry State. And we have 125 seniors from Michigan State University. As you can see this slide, this is how it's broken down, the seniors and the interns. On the left side, you can see how many interns we have, and in what areas, and what schools. And then on the right side, we have the seniors and what schools. We also have some from, you know, from Ferry State University and Arizona State University. This concludes our session, our presentation. It's quite an honor to have all these people and thank them for the good work they do. And this is the part of the school district, many, many different programs that, together with the schools, do it to try to make a better community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, everybody. We do have a meeting next week, a week from today, back at our administration building, a regular meeting of the board. Any other questions, comments from board members? I know it's been a... Dr. Body?
Everybody, oops. Hello?
Yep.
All right. Everyone already...
No, hold on. Yes? Okay, yes.
You guys can hear me in the back? I have a question, Sergio. Sorry. Is this thing on? For our refugee kiddos who are from Afghanistan and other predominantly Muslim countries, do we, as a district, provide any support to them with respect to, like, offering rooms for prayer? Or the ability to pray during the school day? Or support during the month of Ramadan? Like, what services in particular are we providing those children?
Great question. Our most of new arrivals that we had coming from Afghanistan that went to North Elementary School in Lyons, all have a place. We met with the parents, we had them all come to the school, we provided a meal, we went to the Afghan store and got the good bread that they make and bacon there, and we had all this conversation and talked to them, explained about how the schools in the United States work, and how we can do this, and, and find a good place to pray, where it's going to be, they know what to do, they know where to get the rug, where to put it, what time to do it, how to put it back, how to come back, and to understand that they can do it, but we had to make sure that they understood how to do it. So we've done that. With Ramadan, we're working and making sure that the schools understand that certain days that the kids are absent, there's a reason why. So as far as the kids being hungry and not eating during the day because of Ramadan, sometimes the kids are very hungry, you know, but...
It's usually older kids, though, that are like actually fasting the whole day, like your high school kids, or maybe late middle school. And it's not just the international kiddos, because there's a lot of Muslim kids that are from here, that go to school here. Do those kids also have the opportunity to like pray during the school day, or have support for like Fridays, like prayers and stuff like that?
So, and I'll speak specifically at North, because that's where the majority of our Afghan students were placed at. On Fridays, they're eligible to be released from their classes for prayers. And so the classroom in which they can pray has all of the prayer rugs that, that they are eligible to use. And so it's at that time that students who are opting in are eligible to come into the classroom and then pray. And then they go back into, but the teachers are well aware of that and have released them during that time. I've been there when they were eligible to do that, and it doesn't seem to be an issue. It's just part of the school culture.
Super. And high, high school level, same thing?
Sexton High School, in the fourth floor, they have an ability to do that.
Cool. Thanks.
I have a student, I graduated from Everett, and he works in the library. And every day around 2:00, he'll just let me know that he's going to go pray. And he went to Everett. So does Everett have a space? It makes sense that all of our high schools are providing spaces for our students to go pray. So I'm wondering, is that something that could happen, or is it in the making, or what's the status on it?
I can definitely find out. I'm not sure if Everett has, has a room identified, but I would say that the majority of our teachers and our administrators are well aware of this, the request that students might have. And so I will make sure to find out if there is a room specifically identified at the high schools that are eligible for students to go and pray. Yes.
And I have seen high schools with kids that find a place that can pray. And I also have seen kids pray in our high schools and not be bothered and be left alone. And we have developed a culture that our schools respect all our different religious and values that we have from different places. So that's the culture that you develop through the years of having these kids.
I appreciate Robin saying what she did. I went to a high school where I was one of less than 10, probably one of five Muslim kids. And I was too scared and embarrassed to even ask for a room to pray in. So I don't think that we should leave it up to the kid necessarily. We could just like have a public pronouncement, where in all three of our high schools, soon to be four, this is the chapel. This is the designated prayer room. If you want the opportunity to pray during the school day, this is where you go. That way, you don't have to make the kid be embarrassed to ask.
That's right.
That's right. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Lucci?
I just wanted, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Keck, and your superstar team, and superstar executive team, and our superstar superintendent. I really appreciate, I mean, I don't think we'll ever be able to have enough ISSs to, for us to fully wrap our arms around everything it is that you do and the depth and breadth of all of your areas of expertise. And I'm just really appreciative for you to come tonight and share all that you did with us tonight. And I'm really proud to be here, and you guys make us proud. So thank you.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation. It's one of the best that we had. But also, I am so happy about, if we continue doing the same things, we will, doing, receiving the same results. And I am so glad that so many things are going to be different. And that is going to represent the district with hope, and, and more and more, they go along with what education should be. The thank you superintendent and the team and the board, together, together, doesn't matter the name we can use, together, we can dream. We can dream here. Thank you.
Okay. At 8:24, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.